Call the December tenth Village Board Meeting to order. Would you please stand for our pledge allegiance to be led by trustee Ryan Kozniewski?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. This evening we'll be starting with trustee Maher.
Yes, here.
McClafferty.
Here.
Here.
Stapleton.
Here.
Blatzer.
Here.
Kozniewski.
Here. Okay, great. All right, next up consent agenda. Please bear with me, we have several items on here. First off, we have the approval of minutes for the November twenty-sixth Village Board Meeting, as well as the November twenty-sixth Committee of the Whole Minutes. We have approval of disbursements. First ordinance is abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand eighteen to pay debt service on two point six nine million dollars of general obligation bonds. Series two thousand seven, alternate revenue source of the village of Lamont, Cook, DePage and Will Counties. We have an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand eighteen to pay debt service on seven million of general obligation bond series two thousand seven A, alternate revenue source, and two point two one five million general obligation bonds series two thousand eight, alternate revenue source of the village of Lamont, Cook, DePage and Will Counties. We have an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand eighteen to pay debt service on one point seven five five million of general obligation bonds series two thousand ten, alternate revenue source of the village of Lamont and the counties of Cook, DePage and Will. We have ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand eighteen to pay debt service on five million dollars of general obligation waterworks and sewage bonds, alternate revenue source, series two thousand ten A, and build American bonds, which is a direct payment bond of the village of Lamont, Cook, DePage and Will Counties. We have an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand eighteen to pay debt service on three point four two million dollars of general obligation bonds series two thousand A, alternate revenue source, and four point seven five million of general obligation bonds series two thousand twelve B, alternate revenue source of the village of Lamont, Cook, DePage and Will Counties. We have an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand eighteen to pay debt service on three point four million dollars of general obligation bonds series two thousand twelve C, alternate revenue source of the village of Lamont, Cook, DePage and Will Counties. We have an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand eighteen to pay debt service on nine hundred fifty five thousand dollars of general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand fourteen A, alternate revenue source, and nine hundred sixty thousand of taxable general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand fourteen B, which is an alternate revenue source of the village of Lamont, Cook, DePage and Will Counties. Continuing on, we have an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand eighteen to pay debt service on one point four three million special service area number one, which is Route eighty-three and Main Street, special ad valorem tax bonds, series two thousand nine of the village of Lamont, Cook, DePage and Will Counties. We have an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand eighteen to pay debt service on five point five eight million dollars of general obligation bonds, waterworks and sewage, alternate revenue source, series two thousand fifteen A, and two point six nine million of general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, series two thousand fifteen B, and one point one eight million of general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, series two thousand fifteen C of the village of Lamont, Cook, DePage and Will Counties. Also, we have an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand eighteen to pay debt service on four point one six million dollars of general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, series two thousand seventeen A, and one point nine four million of general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, series two thousand seventeen B, and eight hundred ninety thousand dollars of general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, series two thousand seventeen C. We have an ordinance for the levying and the assessing of taxes for the village of Lamont, Cook, Will and DePage Counties, Illinois, for the fiscal year commencing May first two thousand eighteen and ending April thirtieth two thousand nineteen. We have an ordinance establishing a street and bridge tax, and last but not least, we have an ordinance establishing a street lighting tax. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm moved.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Blatzer, seconded by trustee Snagowski. Again, all of these ordinance of abating of taxes relate to mainly infrastructure projects. If you add it all up, it's about fifty million dollars in total. These infrastructure projects range from the building of our police department, to the public works department, to the renovation of Village Hall, to the building out of, you know, of our waterways, either it be our wells or our pumps. Again, these taxes are abated. They did not go on property taxes individually. What that means by abatement is that this fifty million dollars has to be paid for by the operating funds that we receive, mainly in the general fund, as well as the water and sewer fund as well. Correct, Chris? So again, we abate these, we do not put these on the tax rolls, we do not increase the property taxes. So again, that's what this all means. With that being said, any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, with that being said, need a roll call, please.
Maher.
Yes.
McClafferty.
Yes.
Snagowski.
Yes.
Stapleton.
Yes.
Blatzer.
Yes.
Kozniewski.
Yes.
Okay, great. Motion approved. All right, next up, some exciting stuff. We have a proclamation for Commander Tully. Commander Tully, can you please join us at the podium, please? I'm gonna read the proclamation, and then we're gonna maybe wipe some tears and do some right there. All right, whereas on April tenth nineteen eighty-nine Commander Daniel Tully, excuse me, Commander Daniel Tully began his law enforcement career with the village of Lamont Police Department, and whereas during his tenure, Commander Tully is recognized for contributing to the success and reputation of the Lamont Police Department. Commander Tully worked as a patrol officer, a detective and a sergeant prior to his promotion to commander on December first two thousand six. Commander Tully was responsible for the day-to-day operations of the police department, coordinating and evaluating all patrol and investigative functions. He was later responsible for the administration and services provided by the department. And whereas Daniel Tully, during his career with the Lamont Police Department, received multiple commendations, division citations and merit awards, Commander Tully was a graduate of the Northwestern University School of Staff and Command in May of two thousand five. And whereas Commander Tully is credited with planning and developing such programs as the Field Training Officer Program. In nineteen ninety-seven, he designed and helped build the Lamont Police Range, was the project manager in the construction of the new police facility in two thousand and six. He was always an integral part of many departments, community events, including Cap on Top, Cops and Kids, Emergency Vehicle Night, Halloween Hoedown, the Lamont Adjudication Process and Children with Special Needs Open House. And whereas Commander Tully was the president of the Police Pension Board for twenty years and contributed to the strength of the pension fund, he was also a sniper and a team leader on the Lamont Emergency Response Team. He was active in several organizations, including the Will County Chiefs of Police Association, the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System and Ducks Unlimited. And whereas Daniel Tully has supported the goals and contributed to the enhancement of the police department by his many years of law enforcement experience and dedicated service, and whereas Daniel Tully will retire in good standing from the Lamont Police Department today, December tenth two thousand eighteen, after twenty-nine years of service, now therefore I, John Agoski, Mayor Lamont, on behalf of the entire Village Board of Trustees and the entire community of Lamont, hereby acknowledge the contributions that Commander Daniel Tully has made to the Lamont Police Department and the citizens of Lamont during his long and successful career in law enforcement, and wish him a long, happy, healthy and well-deserved retirement. Congratulations. I'm gonna hand it over to Chief here to say a couple words.
Again, in addition to all the things you heard in the proclamation, Dan has always been a huge supporter of the village and of the police department, and we're gonna miss his institutional knowledge about everything that goes around, that happens at the police department and around the village. So even though he's, this is his last day, he's still gonna be on speed dial for a long time.
I take my number.
A couple folks in the audience, Dan's father, Dan Senior, is with us. This is also a real proud moment, bringing the nice congratulations to you as well. And his significant other, Jeannie, and who's not here, are his three daughters, Brianna, Alyssa and Caitlin, but I know they're proud of their father as well. Thirty years in law enforcement is not achieved too often anymore, and this is a well-deserved night for Dan, and we will miss him.
We have a, one of the citizens here has something to add to Dan, if you can come up and out and take a picture, you could.
Oh, my, thank you. Delgado.
This is from this Delgado, and it says, Commander Dan Tully, Lamont Police Department, number one in our hearts. You are very appreciated for what you have done for us throughout the years. Good luck on your retirement, you're going to be missed, no one could ever take your place. You are a guardian angel to my family. God bless you, Chief Delgado, and thank you.
Swag bag.
Might be a little alcoholic in there, but we also have some lollipops, so you gotta promise to split.
With the pension fund? We found the pension fund?
Yeah, why, thank you.
Thanks so much, we appreciate all your hard work, good luck.
No historical book?
We got a thousand copies.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to thank all the trustees and George Schaefer and Kay for making this day possible, they've all worked toward that, and thank you all very much. All the department heads, thank you for working with me, and you know, we had the chiefs over the years, starting out with Wiegand, and then we had Chief Lewis, Chief Shawnessy, and of course Chief Maton, thanks for putting up with all my antics. And you know, thanks to all the sergeants and officers that have carried out some of the crazy things that I've asked them to do over the years, but I think everybody is going to take the reins here and work toward a better Lamont. I want to thank my dad and my mother here for guiding me through this whole time, and I really appreciate that, as well as Jeannie, most recently, has been by my side through that. Thank you all, and have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
It's rough to play the bags, huh?
Shawnessy's in Arizona.
He said it's rough to play the bags.
We have to move on to proclamation when we get to that. Yeah.
Okay. Good night, Merry Christmas. Okay, since we read the proclamation, we need to make it official. So I need a motion to approve Dan's proclamation. We have a motion by trustee Blatzer, seconded by trustee Maher. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion pass. Next up, we have appointment of new attorneys, Odelson and Stirk, as a village attorney and prosecutor. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Stapleton, seconded by trustee McClafferty. Before we actually do the actual, those in favor, just want to talk about this. First off, George will fill in the details of this, but again, over the, you know, last year and a half, we've gone through as many initiatives as possible, as far as trying to, you know, save money, be as productive, be as efficient as possible. You know, we will have a, I guess it would be a resolution later on approving this, but you know, we went through a thorough process, I'll leave the details to George to explain, but you know, we're very excited about bringing this on. We went through a thorough vetting process, and again, Bert, you guys did, you know, a great job, and you know, we look, you know, we're excited to work with you guys, and we're excited to work with your ideas on, you know, on how we can continue to save money as a village. So again, appreciate all the work that you did there. With that being said, Georgia.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go through the process in a little bit of detail and talk about the engagement. There is a legal services agreement later on in the agenda to the clerk report, but we wanted to make the appointment under the mayor's report here, so I'll go through that and fill in any other details later on. As the mayor mentioned, we've, you guys have been asking staff to look at all of our various cost drivers, whether it be health insurance, risk management, salaries, but legal fees has been a significant cost driver the last few years, and you've asked us to kind of go out and look at the market and see what else is out there, not only for cost, but also quality, how well they fit with our, some of our projects that we have going on in town. So we did put out an RF, request for qualification, a very general RFQ for legal services, and we put that out to the market about four, three or four months ago now, received an outstanding number of applications. Many people want to be the village's attorney, so we had fourteen responses to our RFQ. We had a small committee made up of a couple trustees and senior staff to narrow it down to about five or six at manageable level. We then interviewed those five or six and then brought the top two candidates to the village board for a, an interview at our, at a special meeting last month. So we were able to go through the process, and after all that vetting, all the interviews and reference checks, it's my recommendation at this point to move forward with the appointment of Odelson and Stirk. I think a little bit about, you know, the engagement in the firm, you know, Odelson and Stirk is a professional legal corporation located in Evergreen Park, pretty local, also have a couple other offices even closer than that, and employs twenty attorneys, eighteen support staff. The firm provides legal services to fifty-three municipal, school, township clients, and they are the village attorney for fourteen municipalities at this point, many of which are in Cook County and in the neighboring areas to Lamont, so it's a local, local firm, and they could specialize their services to our needs. Full-service firm, at this point, we're recommending and working with Bert to take over as village attorney, obviously new litigation as it comes up, but also the village prosecution work. I think we've carved that out a little bit in the past, and I think it'll make sense to have Odelson and Stirk work with the police department, with Jason and the code enforcement side, to be the prosecutor for our local adjudication, also at Bridgeview, when we have citations that come up, they can work with our code and integrate really well into our staff. Over the next, you know, few months, we'll evaluate the other legal services, but primarily those are the two prosecution, village attorney, that will have Odelson and Stirk take over. You know, just to talk a little bit about the rate structure, you know, many communities, they do this thing, they do it very differently with retainer, non-retainer. Currently, we are on a retainer for, that includes a limited scope for seventy-five hundred dollars a month, and then the hourly rate is two forty per hour for partners, for anything outside the retainer. So that is one area where we are gonna see some savings with the engagement. You know, Odelson's firm is at one eighty-five for partners, so we'll see a savings there. And we talked a little about retainer or hourly option. The village has a lot of projects, a lot of, a lot of different issues, projects, initiatives that we want their firm to get up to speed on, work with staff. So the first three months, he's agreed to keep our retainer actually lower than what it is now for more services, so we can kind of work together, he can understand our account, we can, at the end of the engagement period, we can get together and look at the, all the billings, and even if, you know, as Bert mentioned, even if you take it in the shorts for the first couple months, you know, we're able to look at it, and so I'm, no, I'd like to be able to budget accordingly, so I think after a three-month sample, we'll be able to look at it and figure out ways we can become more efficient as well on our billing. So I think it'll be a good partnership, and looking forward, we will have access to all the attorneys at this law firm based on issue, but primarily, we're gonna be served by Bert Odelson, Michael Stillman, who's here today, and then Elizabeth Schein as well.
Mike, Elizabeth, come on up, sit up here, please, and introduce yourself. Again, we, we met with Bert and Mike, you know, introductory, off the clock, right? But no, it was a great first meeting, and you know, we're really excited, he's got a strong team behind him. You're well-known in the south suburbs in Cook County, and I think that's obviously a perfect fit for us. You know, Cook County is somewhat of a different animal, and you guys have navigated those waters well, and you know, Mike, you're local as well, you know, everyone's, you're all local, you have connections on both sides of the aisle down in Springfield, we're excited about that. You know, we shared with them, you know, one of the things, and I'll tell you, every time I see you, we want to get a grant, you know, for that over, for that bridge across, I'm gonna tell you every time I see you. Okay, but you know, those are the connections we need, you know, with the state, and you know, again, we're excited, you guys did a great job. Want to thank, you know, Ron and everyone that participated in the interview process, you know, spending two full days interviewing with follow-up interviews, talking to lawyers, you know, I'm not saying that I didn't enjoy it, but I'll tell you right now, I really don't like lawyers.
You'll never get those two to do that.
But anyway, no, really looking forward to working with you guys, and you know, we're off to a good start, and you know, so far, so good. So again, with that being said, any other comments or questions? Okay, with that being said, we need a motion, correct?
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, so those, okay, so we need a vote. Okay, those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, motion pass. Okay, moving on, mayor's mention. Okay, again, we got a, with the, with it being the holiday season, we have a lot going on, but to start, this is on a very sad note. As a board in a community, we wish to share, you know, our condolences to Bill Erdman's family. Bill passed away recently, and Bill was a very active volunteer with Lamont. In fact, he was part of the Lamont Video Access League, known as Channel Six. Bill was a volunteer, he would videotape these meetings on a weekly basis, and he was very helpful. And again, on behalf of the board and on behalf of the entire community, we wish Bill and his family our condolences, especially during, you know, the holiday season here. Moving on, we want to thank everyone for coming out to the hometown holiday on December first. Be sure to visit Lighting Up Lamont Light Display on Main Street and at the Budnik Plaza. It was sponsored and is sponsored by the Artistic Holiday Designs and the Downtown Merchants Alliance. Just want to note, this is not one dollar of taxpayer money, this is all done by the Downtown Merchant Alliance Committee, so we want to thank them, and we really want to thank Artistic Holiday Designs. They're the building with all the lights on it, and they donated a lot of this, and we really appreciate it. Again, we want to, you know, continue to do as much as we can to make the downtown area, to make all of Lamont be as inviting as possible to not only our residents, but outsiders as well, and again, we appreciate their help with that. Moving on, Old Corey Middle School will hold their holiday concert this Tuesday, December eleventh at seven, seven PM with performances from the different levels of bands and the choir. The doors will open at six thirty PM. On Wednesday, December nineteenth, from six to eight PM, join Hope and Friendship Foundation's mission Stay Christmas Caroling. Participants, participants will meet at six PM in the Lamont Township Office and will visit homes in the community that could use the spirit, love and sound of Christmas at their doorstep. Bring baked goods to give a gift of sweets to go along with the gift of song. You can also donate baked goods, so visit hopeandfriendshipfoundation.com for more information. On Saturday, December twenty-second, from ten AM to twelve PM, join Hope and Friendship Foundation at Old Corey Middle School to help create the care boxes that will be delivered on Christmas Day with the Christmas dinners. Drop off or bring donations of personal care, cleaning or paper products during the month of December. You can drop these off at Ben's in the lobbies of Old Corey, the Lamont Police Department, Lamont Township Office or Starbucks, all the donations are due by Friday, December twenty-first. Moving on, Hope and Friendship will hold their Christmas dinner and care box delivery on Christmas Day. They are in need of prepared food for the dinners, package for four persons, servings of potatoes, vegetables, side dishes, stuffing, gravy, rolls and desserts, please drop off at Old Corey on Christmas Day, December twenty-fifth, from eleven thirty AM to one thirty PM, and that will be on the east side door. On Monday, December thirty-first, join the Lamont Park District Core Fitness for their Family New Year's Eve Bash at the Core to ring in the new year. They will do this at noon instead of midnight, celebrate with party favors, a DJ, a balloon drop at noon, pizza, lunch and fun, new year activities and games for the whole family. You can register at thelamontparkdistrict.org. Also, we have an update on our Cook County State's Attorney case, the Quo Rento case. We have a written statement here that I'm going to read for you. Like I said, we have an update on the Quo- side door. On Monday, December 31st, join the Lamont Park District Core Fitness for their Family New Year's Eve Bash at the Core to ring in the new year. They will do this at noon instead of midnight. Celebrate with party favors, a DJ, a balloon drop at noon, pizza, lunch, and fun, new year activities and games for the whole family. You can register at thelamontparkdistrict.org. Also, we have an update on our Cook County State's Attorney case, the Co' War rental case. We have a written statement here that I'm going to read for you. Like I said, we have an update on the Co' War rental litigation with the Cook County State's Attorney, the case where the Cook County State's Attorney filed a lawsuit seeking to remove 17 properties from the Village of Lamont and place them in unincorporated Cook County jurisdiction. The properties sought to be removed include the residential subdivisions of the Glenns Akonamera, Kettering Estates, Enclave at Kettering, Red Drive, Willow Point, Equestrian Meadows, all along with the vacant land at McCarthy and Bell, West Shore Pipeline, First Church of Nazarene, a Lamont Fire Protection District Station, Lamont High School District 210 Athletic Complex, and land owned by School District 113A. The properties involved in the lawsuits were annexed over a period ranging from 1996 to the year 2010. The village has provided services to these properties since their annexation and currently represents several hundred homes, residents, and property owners. The village has been actively defending the case since its filing on July 6, 2016. A similar case was previously brought against Lamont by the Village of Palest Park in February of 2016, in which the village eventually prevailed in July of 2016. The village has previously communicated that we had settled with the Cook County State's Attorney, and under the settlement agreement, we're happy to say all properties are to remain in the Village of Lamont. Prior to the judge approving and entering this settlement agreement, the Village of Palest Park filed a last-minute motion to intervene in the case, which delayed the approval of the settlement. The judge has subsequently denied Palest Park's motion to intervene in the case and has approved and entered the settlement, which brings this case to its conclusion. The settlement entered between the parties is in the best interests of the residents and property owners affected by the litigation and avoids more costly litigation for the village. We would like to thank the State's Attorneys, State's Attorney Fox and her team for their cooperation as we work to settle the case. We also would like to thank the interveners in the case, specifically the Lamont Township and the Lamont Township School District 210, who helped communicate the public harm associated with the ouster of the territory. Lastly, we would like to thank all the affected property owners, residents, taxing bodies, and other interested parties who showed patience and resolve as we work to resolve the case. The village is pleased to have this case behind us and looks forward to the continuing our provision of services to these properties as we move forward together as a community. That is the official statement. Again, we're very happy to have this behind us. Again, we would not be surprised if Palest, not intervenes, but what's the official word I'm looking for?
Appeal.
Appeals this. So, stay tuned there. But, this is official. It's, it's been filed. So, again, assuming there is no appeal, we could stop the spending of, of taxpayer money. If it is appealed, again, we would have to, again, resolve their appeal. So, stay tuned there. Also, last but not least, our village offices will be closed on Christmas Eve as well as Christmas Day and on New Year's Day. Remember to patronize all our local retailers for your holiday shopping, and of course, we wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays. All right. So, with that being said, we, next up is audience participation. If anyone would like to speak, please step up to the mic if you could. Does anyone want to speak? If, go ahead. And Rick, can you just please, if you want, if you feel comfortable signing in there?
Rick Lighthart, Lamont, Illinois. A number of years, about five or six years, some years ago, there was a group that started called Let Us Vote. It was in response to the former mayor and the board trying to put in a sports complex, and a number of residents gathered. I was part of that group, and as has spoken, that group continues to be effective and, and communicative, and I'm just kind of like the guy who they call. So, I'm reporting to the village some concerns that I've got. With what you just said, Mayor John, I don't know what that means to the article in the Chicago Tribune that came out a couple of days ago that said Palest Park is going to put a high-rise hotel at Cog Hill and all that report. So, my phone starts ringing, saying, "Rick, what do you know?" I don't know anything. But, what it sounds like is with what you just said, does that mean that Palest can't come in and take over everything? I don't know what that means, and people are going to call me and ask. So, what does that mean, John? This, this thing that just happened, what, what do I tell these people who are calling me?
Yeah, no, fair, fair question, and actually, we were going to address that next up. So, bottom line is, is that the four property owners, the golf courses, you know, as well as the farm, that is in Palest Park. They, they have, they have not officially signed an annexation agreement, but they have stated that they want to be part of Palest Park. Okay? With that being said, they are, as of right now, officially part of Palest Park. And as far as what came out earlier this week, as far as what Palest put together, my understanding is Palest Park paid for probably a consultation to, to, you know, investigate what potentially could go on those properties. Okay? And, you know, it's, it was, you know, some, the timing was somewhat interesting with, with, you know, the case of ours being resolved, but they, they came out and mentioned, you know, again, I've not spoke with those individual property owners. I think, you know, like anything, you typically do a study to see, you know, potentially what could go on those properties. Now, you know, what plays out in the, the market might be a different story. That's all I could say, because we've all done studies. We've all, you know, anything from '83 in Maine, what can, what can go there? You know, these are the, the, the potential things that can. Again, there needs to be several things that need to be accomplished in order to make this happen, you know, and, and some of them are just getting basic utilities out there. Right? So, I think, you know, there, there needs to be a lot of investment. Again, I'm not going to talk on behalf of Palest or these, these landowners, but, you know, I think this is their first step. And again, to my knowledge, they have not signed an official annexation agreement. Correct? So, what that potentially could mean is, you know, if someone sells the land, you know, potentially, you know, I, I would imagine whoever buys it, if, if these four landowners do not develop on it, again, they could develop, but they might sell it, and it might be developed 20 years from now. Until you sign an official annexation agreement, you know, you could always, you know, based on some of the, I'm looking at my lawyers here, based on some of the, the rules of de-annexation, you know, if someone was to buy that property tomorrow, could they de-annex out of Palest? You know, it's a possibility. I don't know if that's going to happen. I'm not going to speak on behalf of those owners.
That helps me answer these people who call. Okay? Because now I understand the annexation. So, just because this has happened, the annexation can be de-annexed. It can still change. Is that right? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, yes, yeah.
It's a possibility that it can still change, because when they saw a high-rise hotel in Water Park in the Chicago Tribune article, they were saying, "Rick, what's this going to do to us? What's that going to do to Lamonters? Are, are they going to come on over and take, they're going to take downtown next, or what, how's this work?" So, thank you for that clarification. So, I wanted to pass that on. That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting calls. Okay? I'm really glad that these guys have joined us. It sounds good when you say they have contacts with the state. I know every village is getting, getting stuck to them by the state. We're not getting our funds. So, please help us. So, thank you for that.
And Rick, I mean, usually it's not a give and take, but I, I know you, I, you know, if there's anything you want me to do personally and, and meet with some of these groups, we'd be more than happy to do that.
We'll talk.
Yep.
Okay. I, I know there isn't any press here anymore, so there's no, there's no press. There used to be somebody here from the Pats, or it used to be somebody. So, they're reporting. So, now people are only getting their information from the Tribune or Suburban Tribune or something. And so, there's nobody here to understand, you know, the police officers retiring, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing available. So, I just want you to know, I'm not here just speaking to the village. I'm going to the township. They're asking me to go to the fire. They're asking me to go to the high school, the grade school. I met with Al Malle. So, I'm kind of the person to go and say, what, here's what, here's what I'm hearing in, in, in my community of those, that pretty large group of people. So, what is the status of the architecture payments to the sports complex initiative? Is that still ongoing? Is the village still paying for that? Is that over? That's a question that I got. So, are we still paying for what the village did with the architecture for the sports complex? Is that still going on, or is that over? It's one of the questions I got.
Yeah. That litigation case you're talking about?
Yeah.
That is a still, that's an ongoing litigation case.
Okay.
Where that architect is suing the village or pursuing the village for, for potential, you know, work that they did on behalf. So, that...
And what I understand is the village did make a payment to them, but then we stopped, the village stopped making a payment to them. That's what, that's what I heard. That's what people are asking me. Rick, can you get some clarification on that? So, do I tell these people it's just ongoing?
No, Rick, and that's all, that's public information. There is litigation ongoing that we can't talk about, but there was a separate agreement for, for an amount, $15,000, I believe, that was paid to the, to the vendor.
Yeah.
For stormwater management and permitting work. So, that's what was paid to the vendor.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do you anticipate this thing is going to be over, or is this going to come to a conclusion, or, we, we don't know yet.
It's, it's ongoing, and, and there's still discovery being conducted, but it's, it's ongoing. We, we anticipate, you know, within, within...
Put us away. When we go into executive session after this, we, we'll...
Litigation's an unknown, you know, animal, so I can't give you a timeframe, but we'll be on communication.
If I might, I'll add one item to that. That was never signed or approved by the board. Period.
No signed contract.
No signed contract. But, a payment was made by the village.
For another, for what, for a separate thing. Was done, not for what they're claiming.
Thank you. That helped, thank you, Rick. That helped, that, that helps me answer these people's questions. I, I don't know.
Additionally, if I might, on this other property that you're talking about, the golf courses.
Yeah.
It was a separate lawsuit, and we looked into it, and it was all discussed here in the open, what happened on that. We decided not to pursue it because the cost of pursuing that and continuing, going after it would have jeopardized not only us, but the owners of the land, and it was cheaper for them. Once we knew that they could de-annex, it made sense to just let it go for now. So, the mayor will be talking to them over a period of time, as he said he never has, and if they'll listen, we would meet with them again.
And, and to the village, I would say, if you want somebody from our group or myself to join you for that initiative from some of the voters and say, "Hey, let's, let's work this out," we're available.
Yeah, no, in fact, Rick, we're kind of tossing this around earlier. We'd love to have, you know, a, a committee, an update committee where we get together. We could talk about, love to talk to your group, or everyone's invited, but let's connect and, and, you know, whatever, either it be that or, or some of the other issues you talked about earlier. Love to address those.
And for clarification, I saw on the website, the meeting started at 6:30 tonight, but I didn't know it was changed until 7:00. So, if the website needs to be changed, I thought it started at 6:30.
I looked at the website, and it said 7:00.
I thought it said 6:30, but I...
We'll get that thing here on the...
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome, attorneys.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. That concludes the mayor's report. Next up, the clerk's report.
Thank you. This evening, we have a few ordinances and resolutions that need to be passed. The first ordinance that passed would be O-72-18, and this is granting a special use to a freight transportation terminal at 16135 New Avenue, Unit 12 in Lamont.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee stapled and seconded by trustee McClafferty. Jason, will fill us in on this.
Yes. The proposed application is to conduct the business for Ava Transportation Group. They are going to have an office and dispatch center and one dock there. We had the public hearing at the October Planning and Zoning Commission and discussed at the November Committee of the Whole. As part of the condition of the special use, there is no overnight parking of trucks except for in the one loading dock. PCC does recommend approval.
Okay, great. Just, again, reiterate, no overnight parking. Right, okay. With that being said, any other questions, comments? Okay. Roll call, please.
Maher?
Yes.
McClafferty?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Blatzer?
Yes.
Kwasniewski?
Yes. Okay, motion approved.
The next item that passed this evening would be O-73-18, and this is amending the zoning map of the Village of Lamont from our six multiple, multi-family residential district to our four single-family preservation and infill district at the, at 313 East Logan Street, Lamont, Illinois.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by trustee Blatzer, seconded by trustee Maher. Jason?
Yes. The purpose of the rezoning here is to build one single-family detached residence. The comprehensive plan describes the area as infill residential, so it's consistent with the comp plan. Public hearing was heard at the October PCC meeting, and this was discussed at the November Committee of the Whole. PCC recommends approval.
Great, thanks, Jason. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Okay. Maher?
Yes.
McClafferty?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Gosh. Stapleton?
Yes.
Isn't that hard a word? Blatzer?
Yes.
Kwasniewski?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
The next item that passed would be O-74-18, disconnecting certain property commonly referred to as 9805 and 9515 Lamont Road, Lamont, Illinois, from the Village of Lamont.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by trustee Blatzer, seconded by trustee McClafferty. Jason?
This property is north of the boundary agreement between Lamont and the Village of Woodridge, more commonly known as the Malle property these days. This was discussed twice at the Committee of the Whole, and the disconnection is sort of routine here, but would like to thank Mr. Malle for his patience as we put these together.
Great, thanks, Jason. Any other comments, questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Maher?
Yes.
McClafferty?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Blatzer?
Yes.
Kwasniewski?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
The next item that passed this evening would be a resolution. It would be R-63-18, and this is approving a legal services agreement with Odelson and Sturck Limited and appointing Odelson and Sturck as village attorney and village prosecutor.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion, motion by trustee stapled and seconded by trustee Snagowski. George?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ray. This is the formal resolution that approves a legal services agreement we talked about earlier. Just to clarify a couple of things, the agreement is retroactive to December 1st. It's our first board meeting in December, obviously, so we were able to make it retroactive, and Bert and his team have already started working on the account, and, and everyone's been really happy with their work over the first nine days, so keep it up. But, no, the, the agreement essentially, it's, it's a active until terminated by either party. There's really no term. I know Bert, during the interviews, mentioned, you know, on a handshake, we're good to go. We're government, we have to paper things up a little bit, but I appreciate that, you know, that's, that's just the type of, of arrangement. He, he did say he doesn't foresee any, you know, rate increases, so that's good. We're going to hold him to that. It'd be $185 an hour for partners, $165 per hour for associates, and $75 for paralegals and law clerks. And, like I said, the first three months will be capped for the majority of services, and then we'll, we'll budget accordingly from there, and, and, you know, keep the board updated on, on the legal spend and, and go from there. But, this is an agreement that officially approves their services for going forward.
This is what you would call, quote unquote, an "at-will" agreement.
Correct.
Can be, we don't foresee it being canceled, Bert, but just want to make sure the public understands.
My end.
Yeah. All right, thanks, George. Any other questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Maher?
Yes.
McClafferty?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Blatzer?
Yes.
Kwasniewski?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
The last resolution that passed this evening would be R-64-18, and this is approving a legal services agreement with Tressler and appointing Tressler as a special counsel.
Okay, great. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, motion, motion by trustee Blatzer, seconded by trustee Kwasniewski.
Okay, motion, motion by trustee Blatzer, seconded by trustee Kwasniewski. George?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A bit of a cleanup item. This is our existing or our previous law firm. I've talked to Andrew Payne, our partner in this case, or from Tressler. Inevitably, there will be some projects that they're finishing out, litigation. Over time, we'll talk about, you know, when that transition officially should occur, but they should have an agreement on the books for their continued work for the village. But once all the other work is complete through Tressler, I'll terminate this agreement administratively. But same rate as previous for Tressler, it's just to get it on the books for remaining work. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Any other questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, Maher?
Yes.
McClafferty?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Blatzer?
Yes.
Kwasniewski?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
That's all I have.
All right, next up, the most exciting thing we've been waiting for all night, the village attorney report. You guys, do you have anything, Bert?
Sure. Well, I have two things for closed session regarding litigation. The other thing, I just wanted to say, just thank you to everybody through the process. It was quite an extensive process. I've been doing this for a few years, and it probably was the most arduous and difficult process. But kudos to the mayor and the administrator and the board and the staff for getting, hopefully, the very best, get the best ready. We really wanted to come to Lamont. It's a perfect fit for our firm. You saw some of the other folks I brought. We have a great support. That's why Liz and Mike are here tonight. You'll see their faces as well as mine. When we have some other litigation, you'll see some other faces as well as ours. Yesterday, I brought my wife and one of my daughters to town, and we had a great burgers and beers at Nick's. It was nice. Made friends with Trish, the Sunday bartender. Then went over to the core, took a private tour of the core, which was nice. My daughter's a physical therapist. She has her own business in Oak Blonds, and she appreciated that tour. I know Lamont. We know Lamont. We're gonna get to know Lamont a lot better, and we look forward to it. So, thank you, and the rest of my presentation will be in closed session.
Awesome. All right, thanks, Bert. All right, George, administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One quick item. Believe it or not, budget season is upon us. I know staff is really excited about that and the board, but, no, it's an important time, you know, for, we'd like to get the community involved. We have some ideas for even the, for Rick and getting him involved a little bit more to understand our finances a little bit more. But we will have public hearings in January and February on the budget, and probably March, but now is the time to start thinking about priorities, projects. Just, you know, looking at it right off the bat, we're looking at another deficit like we had last year. Not a whole lot's changed, so we will be talking next Monday at our committee meeting, kinda early stages, budget preparation, and then we're also gonna talk about the potential referendum question that we've talked about, to put on the ballot for April, to help fill that gap, to fill our capital needs. So, now is the time to get involved from the board, the community, to understand our budget. We're experimenting with some transparency tools to make it a little bit easier to understand our finances and to hopefully make it the best budget yet, and I'll kinda leave to the mayor. We talked a little bit about, next week, we will talk a little bit more about the referendum options, but-
Yeah, I mean, just to reiterate what George said again, last board meeting, we spoke about the home rule referendum getting voted down, and we appreciate the record turnout. We heard what everyone had to say. We had great conversations, great meetings, great feedback from all the residents. Very helpful for us. However, we're still, you know, we still have a million-dollar or so gap that we need to fill, so we have to address that. We know more. Chris, I think just your initial look at the budget for next year, that million dollars, it's not going away, right? So, we cannot continue to balance the budget by not laying out money for capital expenditures for infrastructure, mainly, you know, our roadways, waterways, so forth, so on. So, you know, with that being said, we're gonna come out with a newsletter. Time is somewhat of the essence, 'cause one of the options is we're up against a deadline, and one of the options that we talked about is a one percent sales tax increase. That one percent sales tax increase, is it going, it's going to be a referendum, but in order to have that referendum, we have to act on that in a timely manner, which means before January, what, fourteenth?
Yeah, January fourteenth is the last day. We're gonna talk about it tonight a little bit. That's a little too close. That is our first board meeting, regular board meeting in January, and if you had a snowstorm, anything, lack of a quorum, to miss out on that opportunity, it's just too close. So, we're gonna have to call a special meeting the first week in January, and we'll check with schedules and get back to the community on that. But it'll be the first week in either January seventh or that week.
And again, the one percent sales tax increase is not the only option. Again, from a board perspective, we want, you know, to fill this gap with not, you know, one-hundred percent being backed by the residents. We want, you know, ideally, to be able to put some of this burden on non-residents. And that's why we originally were looking at home rule, because home rule included a one percent sales tax, but it also included our ability, which we do not have as a non-home rule, to address truck traffic within town. Truck traffic, either it be parking, we cannot, we cannot, you know, for lack of a better term, we cannot permit park trucking as a non-home rule. So, therefore, we have no tool, you know, in essence, to either get the money that the damage those trucks do to our roads, or to at least limit it with permit parking. Also, we're going to have diesel fuel that's being sold. We have two potential sites, one on the north side, one on the south side of town. Again, as non-home rule, we cannot implement a special add-on tax for that diesel fuel. So, again, that's why we were looking at home rule originally. That's gone. That's been voted down. We need to either look at the one percent sales tax, or we have to look at other avenues of raising this revenue. As non-home rule, we have limited options, and mainly, the other two options are vehicle sticker or our water rates, our water and sewer rates. So, again, look for the newsletter coming out later this month. That will discuss those options. Again, as a board, we're trying to, A, not raise property taxes, and B, not have this burden be one-hundred percent on the residents. That's why we're looking at sales tax. So, again, as a recap, you know, that's what we're looking at as far as funding for that. Any other comments on that?
I just wanna clarify one thing, George. I know what you meant, but you talked about, again, having a deficit budget. We did not have a deficit budget. We have deficit budget planning. What we don't do is spend it. We had a balanced budget, and we do that by not spending and not fixing. So, we can only kick the can on roads so many times before we have to do it. So, I just wanna clarify what you meant.
Correct, this board is always-
It's in the planning process. It is a deficit. We avoid it by not doing it, which you can't do forever.
Yeah, balancing the budget on the backs of our capital needs, correct.
Good point, Rick. And again, we abate all of the debt we have. We do not put that on the property tax rolls. Again, that is not something we wanna do. So, anything else, George, on your-
That is it.
Report?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Next up, we have, any board reports? No board reports? About staff reports. Chief?
In late October, there was a school bus tragedy in Indiana where three children were killed at a bus stop because of a motorist that highlighted the stoparm passed. That's kind of highlighted a lot of things that become an issue around the area for a lot of police departments. Currently, the Lamont Police Department, along with Lamont from Bear School District 113A, are researching implementation of an automated school bus stoparm enforcement program. The state of Illinois has enacted legislation authorizing the use of these bus cameras to capture drivers illegally passing school buses. Earlier this year, the school district had installed some cameras on their buses for the purpose of recording motorists, and since the start of school just this year, they've observed one hundred and sixty-three violations. So, we can't yet use those violations for automated enforcement until we put that program together, and there's a lot of technical obstacles to putting that infrastructure in place, but we're looking into it. We and the school district take all these violations seriously, share the concern for student safety, and we want to prevent any incidents like we've had in Indiana. The code prohibits traffic from either direction from passing a school bus while it's flash or flashing unless the road is four full driving lanes divided by a solid barrier. We have a lot of problems on McCarthy Road where we have some turn lanes, and people believe that that counts as lanes, and they do not. So, we're gonna put some up on the website. We're gonna have the law. We're also gonna put out a PSA tomorrow in the Pats, and then we're gonna start sending letters to residents that are currently catching on these stoparm violations. They're not gonna be tickets. It's just a warning to them so that they're aware, and what we're looking for is voluntary compliance. Around the school bus, just stop and make sure the school bus is moving before the both directions start to move.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Chief, do you wanna comment on, there was a, like, on the Channel Ten News, I think, on one of the major networks, talked about a quote-unquote "Lamont bus" being passed, you know, illegally, and we looked into that. That was not in Lamont, correct?
That was actually not in Lamont or Lamont School District Bus. It was one of our neighboring areas in the township, but that was up on the, up by Archer Avenue and three fifty-five.
Okay.
The same type of thing.
Yeah, yeah.
As frequently. I think it's, this has highlighted an issue that a lot of the police departments and school districts are being asked about, 'cause I think people see frequently that people are disobeying that. And I think it's because people don't really understand what the rules are with the school bus stoparms. So, part of what we're gonna be doing is educating the folks on what the requirements are.
Great, thanks.
Chief, if I might add one other thing, because it's the tip of the month. If we might add on, I cannot believe how many people are still driving around holding a phone to their ear, period, let alone in the school area. Again, it's gotta be just a lack of education, I guess, so if there's some way to add that on to this initiative, I think it would be good. People don't know that those are no longer allowed, period, but you see plenty of people driving around, holding a phone in their ear, and nine times out of ten, it's the one who can't see because they've got it up here and they'll turn that way. So, that's a problem.
I think you're being a little nice. I think that's been around a long time, and I think folks know that they need hands-free devices when driving around, but we can do some, a PSA. It's always good to have a reminder out there and let that out, and, you know, maybe even do some enforcement.
I think that's the first time I've been called nice, so thanks.
It's the holiday season.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Chief. Anyone else? Chris? Ralph?
Not tonight, sir.
Jason? All good? All right. All right, any unfinished or new business? All right, with that being said, we will have an executive session. I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss under Chapter Five, ILCS 120 of the Open Meetings Act, first, the performance of an employee under 2C1, pending litigation under 2C11. Need a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by trustee Blatzer, seconded by trustee, was that?
So moved.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
It started with Kwasniewski here.
Maher.
I know, we gotta switch this around. Okay, it was typed right on the roster, but I don't know. Okay, Maher?
Yes.
Okay, McClafferty?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Blatzer?
Yes.
Now Kwasniewski?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, motion approved. And we do not expect any decisions post-executive session. So, with that being said, we will move now to closed session.